Welcome back everyone from dinner. Now, I was going to welcome councillor Cunningham but the first thing that's happened is Peter Maddox spilled his glass of water over the table. So, alright, so what I'll do, I'll begin by putting the motion that we accept the report of the Infrastructure Committee. We adopt the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. As I said through the break councillor Cunningham was, took her oath to become a councillor. And I'd like to welcome you to this place. Alright councillor Burke, can I draw the, can I draw the room to, the room's attention to the City Planning Committee councillor Burke?
Thanks mister Chair, I move the report of the City Planning Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 7th of May 2019 be adopted.
Seconded. The report, the report's been moved by councillor Burke, seconded by councillor Hammond, that the report of the City Planning Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 7th of May 2019 be adopted. Is there any debate councillor Burke?
Thanks very much mister Chair, I just want to continue on where I left off in E and C a little bit earlier. And I was talking about 818 Roadie Road and of course this site is a block of land that was owned by the state government that they sold. And they sold it to an aged care developer and the aged care developer had a proposal to clear four and a half hectares of bushland on this site to build four to five storey aged care developments. So, of course, you know, the state government, so the Labour Party in this place, don't mind it when the state government goes and wants to knock down trees and goes and builds aged care on state government owned land. Council did the right thing and we assessed that application and through that process, the state government called the application in. So, they owned the land, they sold it so someone could develop it. Even though councillor, thank you councillor Hammond, even though council offered to buy the land off the state government to bank into our ever increasing bushland portfolio that we have. And then they called it in and they approved it. They called it in and approved it, the ALP state government called in the application and approved it. And what's worse is that they keep extending it too. They keep extending the application as well for this four to five storey. So, when the Labour Party in this place stands up and goes, oh you know the LMP are bad people, you can't trust them. Well, the Labour Party through you mister Chairman have got plenty of form when it comes to development in this city. All you have to do is look at the PDA sites from Hamilton North Shore to the terrible mess up in Fitzgibbon to what they're trying to do in other parts of the city. And if we want to talk about aged care, they want to put six storey aged care on the former Oxley Secondary College site. They want to put, they want to put-
Councillors will be heard in silence councillor Burke.
They want to put six storey aged care on the former Oxley Secondary site. So, the Labour Party in council, happy to play the politics as always, happy to play the politics. But they don't call out the state government when the state government's doing things that they would want to try and call out this administration for because they're not interested in that. All they're interested in is the politics, not the people of Brisbane.
Point of order against you councillor Burke, councillor Hammond?
Will councillor Burke take a question?
More than happy to take a question from councillor Hammond.
Councillor Burke-
Councillor Burke, would you take a question?
Councillor Burke, are you aware that the Labour Minister has approved the clearing of 80% of Koala Habitat on this site? And furthermore, are you aware that they've put offset planting for Koala Habitat in a dog off leash area in the local area?
Yeah, so I mean, and this is the issue, so Roadie Road, not only are they knocking down koala trees but then they're actually, they're actually trying to put offsets onto land that they don't own, that council actually owns, it's not part of the application. So, they're trying to put the offset trees into the local dog park. I mean, when the Labour Party again, when they talk about trying to supposedly representing the people of Brisbane, they're all about the politics. They're all about the politics through you.
Councillor Burke is point of order against you, point of order councillor Johnston.
Will councillor Burke take a question?
Oh, I've got a lot of material to get through here.
Oh no, come on, haven't you got the Lord Mayor's memo?
Alright now, I know we've all had fun at dinner but we're going to get back to work now councillor Burke.
Thanks very much, thanks for your protection once again mister Chair. Alright, when you're done, I mean, if you, if you don't want to hear the debate, so you stand up regularly and go, oh you should be respectful and you should, you know, not interrupt other people. But you're more than happy to do it when other people are speaking, so I will just wait for you to finish. So, as I was saying, Roadie Road, terrible track record when it comes to that site. If only, if only the Labour Party in this place believed what they said rather than just saying things for the sake of saying them and trying to play the politics. Turning to the committee report that we had last week, it was about the new plumbing legislation that's come in. So, the changes to the Plumbing and Drainage Act 2018 that was presented by the council officers. This was changed to an existing legislation that was about 16 years old. I hope the committee members didn't find the presentation too draining. They raised a range of issues that have been changed as part of the legislation, including the increase in penalties and provisions. So, they had not watered down the penalties that have been applied to some of the particular offences that relate to people doing the wrong thing. So, particularly home plumbing, so you still need to use a licensed plumber, like you need to use a licensed electrician to carry out work in your, in your home, at your business, at your place of work. And so we had some statistics, statistics that were presented as part of this presentation as well. The number of approvals that council provided, so in the financial year from 2018 through to 2019, council processed 2,361 commercial approvals, so that's permits. We also carry out a range of inspections as well, so we performed 48,000 site inspections as part of our work in the plumage and drainage, plumbing and drainage area. Obviously, there are serious implications if we have people doing the wrong thing in this space and that's why we take this very seriously. Councils, councillors might remember that in late last year, no, early this year, sorry. We actually moved through this place, an approval for delegations for the CEO to take effect for when this new legislation came into, to place. So, I thought it was timely that the council has also got an update on what changes are actually contained within the changes to the Plumbing and Drainage Act. And I commend the report to the council chamber.
Further debate? They're being done up with the report, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it councillor Hammond, Environment Report please.
Thank you mister Chair, mister Chair, I move that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee held on Tuesday the 7th of May 2019 be adopted.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Hammond, seconded by councillor Richards, that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee dated on, dated Tuesday the 7th of May 2019 be adopted. Is there any debate councillor Hammond?
Thank you mister Chair, we had a committee presentation by the council officers of Habitat Brisbane. I know councillor Richards is going to speak on that. And also we had, through the committee, we had two park naming recommendations approved for two parks in Yorongga, both supported by the local councillor. In addition, there were three expenditure approvals from the local ward Footpath and Parks Trust Fund. They included installation of three picnic shelters and a circular exercise facility at Heathwood Park Heathwood. Installation of a new playground equipment, a shelter and furniture at Garrett Street Park Runcorn. And the supply of installation of exercise equipment at Carl Street Park Wollongaba. These expenditures were all approved by the committee, each and supported by the local councillor. Thank you.
Further debate councillor Johnston?
Yes, I rise to speak on items B and C, the park naming of Ron Goldner Park and Rigby Place, which is a place within Ron Goldner Park. Now, as councillors have heard me say a few times in this place already, this process has not been an easy one. And I will say a few words about why these people are so distinguished and why it should have been an easy one for council. We had a request from Neighbourhood Watch and also from the RSL to rename parks in Yorongga after a distinguished pioneering and World War One family and after a long term Yorongga resident who has given more than 30 years of service to his local community. Now, what should have been a very straightforward process was complicated by the fact that somebody who does not live in Yorongga got five of his friends to sign, well, they weren't even his friends, they were from all over the city, not a single one of them lived locally, to put forward some other names. There wasn't one, I think there were three. And council, I don't know why, decided that they were going to entertain this. Now, that has delayed this park naming process and complicated something that should not have been complicated. I've raised it repeatedly with the officers, with the CEO, with councillor Hammond who did bring it forward, thank you very much. And now we are here doing something that probably should have been done three months ago. So, I would like to put on the record some feedback about why we are naming these two parks after these people. Ron Goldner, we're renaming the Esplanard Park at Yorongga after Ron Goldner. So, Ron sadly passed away last year. He served in our community, well, he moved into our community and built a house with his wife in the 1960s and then has spent the rest of his life raising his family and contributing to almost every single community organisation that is in Yorongga. To give you some examples, when his children went to Kindy, he was on the Kindy Committee at Hyde Road Kindergarten. When his children went to Saint Sebastian's, the local Catholic school, he went on to the PNF. He was the coordinator of Neighbourhood Watch for his entire life, from when a neighbourhood watch started until when he passed away. He was a president and then a treasurer of the Yorongga District Residents' Association. Those, that, that continues and continues. But he also set up and contributed to a number of statewide organisations, including the Asthma Association. And, oh sorry, I just don't have the other one on me. But he contributed to a number of statewide organisations as well. I knew Ron personally because he was obviously so involved in the community in Yorongga. He was a big man, he was a master builder, he was one of those larger than life characters that we all have in our wards. He was a generous man with his time, he was extremely knowledgeable about the local community. He cared passionately about the park across the road from his house. He led the petitions to get it mowed properly, which is still not being mowed properly. He's, he, he was involved from day one in making sure that his community was a wonderful place to live and breathe. And, you know, to be fair, he's been a fan of different politicians in his local area over the time and he was a big fan of Gary Hargraves. I think that was because Gary introduced him to John Howard at, at a local event one time and there's a, he had a lovely photo on the wall. He was a fan of Tim Quins, he thought Tim did a lot for the area when he was the councillor for the area. And I have to be honest, he was a fan and a supporter of mine, which I greatly appreciated. Ron passed away very sadly last year, he lost his battle, you know, with cancer and a range of other problems, he had no kidneys. He'd been living for a couple of years on dialysis, still doing neighbourhood watch, still doing Yorongga District Residents' Association. He survived by his lovely wife Pat, who is an incredible community representative, and his children Kylie Shaun and Rob, his son-in-law. They're a lovely family, naming this park after Ron is a fitting tribute to the contribution that he has made to the suburb of Yorongga. With respect to the Rigby family, this story is quite extraordinary. I think that, you know, we had some idea of who Jack Rigby was because he's on the cenotaph, the World War One cenotaph up at Yorongga Memorial Park. And that is the place where World War One servicemen who, who were killed in action in our district are honoured. And when the RSL said we'd like to create Rigby Place, we had to do a little bit of research about the Rigby family. And it's quite extraordinary what we found out. So, all of the children served in World War One or World War Two. And that included Julia or Lil as she was known, the oldest daughter, she was a nurse in World War One. William Jack, as he was known Rigby, who served in Gallipoli and unfortunately was killed on the first day in action at Gallipoli on the 25th of April 1915. He has no known resting place but is honoured in the Lone Pine Cemetery at Gallipoli. Then you have other brothers, we have George Rigby, who also served in Gallipoli, he was injured but came home. And then Gordon Rigby, who served in, on the Western Front to my knowledge and came home. And then we have the youngest brother Hubert or Hub as he was known, he served in World War Two in Crete and came home to live a long and happy life. Their father, mister William Rigby, was a pioneer, he lived in Yorongga, he was one of the first settlers. And he and two other landowners donated the land that the RSL, the Yorongga Dutton Park RSL is now situated on today. We think donated, they have the original title deeds, they don't think they paid for it, the RSL, so I say that with a little artistic licence. Their mother, also called Julia, was one of the mothers that fought hard to have the 96 memorial trees in Yorongga Memorial Park put in and will honour the 100 years of that park next year. This is an extraordinary pioneering family who gave everything in the service of their country. It is a remarkable thing that our city will honour them by naming Rigby Place, which is down near the Rindara Military Hospital on the banks of the Brisbane River after their family. And I think now and I hope now that every council officer listening up the street and those sitting here understand why I have fought tooth and nail for the past six months to ensure that these distinguished local residents, their service to our community and to our country can be honoured with these park namings in Yorongga.
Further debate councillor Richard?
Thank you Chair, I'd like to rise to speak on the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee's presentation from last week, the Habitat Brisbane Programme. Look, the Pullenvale Ward has a rich and often surprisingly natural wealth in bushland and remnants along the local waterways. It's, it's really up to us to protect and enhance our precious natural assets and to protect today for a better tomorrow for our next generation of Brisbane people. Habitat Brisbane's vision is about supporting the local community and to actively participating with council to restore, protect and create bushland, wetland and waterway habitats across Brisbane. Through this collaboration, we are building habitat and repairing corridors for wildlife movements through removing weeds and planting native vegetation to encourage wildlife use. For example, Cubler Creek and its tributaries flows in and out of the Walther Tail Award and the Pullenvale Ward. As well as their riparian zone form a core corridor for aquatic and terrestrial wildlife movement between Brisbane River and the Mount Cootha. This is an essential part of Brisbane's biodiversity network that is of high ecological value. Being a part of a bush care group is not just rewarding to see your work efforts, it's the sense of community, fostering awareness and appreciation within the community of the need to protect the natural environment. As I mentioned earlier, it's the collaborative work with council's Habitat Brisbane team who provide support to the community groups through training and best practice advice, environmental management and compliance, risk management, workplace health and safety compliance, tools, equipment and materials, contractor support, signage promotion and council liaison. It's the Habitat Programme achievements for 2017 to 2018 is just extraordinary and I want to put it on the record tonight. That they recruited six new groups, they had 1,379 cubic metres of mulch provided. They planted 25,252 native plants that we provided. But also, the stats in this is, is actually extraordinary with the work they do with council officers is that 829 hectares of bushland's being maintained and is currently under restoration. 58,393 plants in ground, 33,141 sourced by groups, 4,218 participating volunteers, 46,306 hours of volunteer work. Now, I want to put on record my thanks to all the groups, but in particular to the ones in the Pullenvale Ward. And that's the Anstead Bush Care Group, the Brookfield Showgrounds Bush Care, Burns Parade Bush Care, Butterfly Bush Care, Cubler Creek Revegetation, Gap Creek, Goldsborough Street, Heather's Patch, Huntington Tuckett, Kemore South, Kersley Road, Lion's Nature Trail, Little Gubberly, Lower Moghl, Mackay Brook, Mary Mary Park, Pullenvale Foresters Park, Rowena Place, Savages Road, Ted's Place, The Billabong, The Hut, Upper Brookfield Bush Regeneration, Upper Gold Creek and Wandering Wheaties. And mister Chair, I want to also acknowledge Kemore South State School because they're a significant contributor now who are part of a bush care group who are looking after a creek at the back of their school. So, I'd like to say thanks to all of their efforts and also to all the volunteers who are thinking about coming on board to form a bush care group because it's about building a better tomorrow today for the next generation to come. Thank you mister Chair.
Further speakers councillor Hammond write a reply?
Thank you mister Chair, I find it disappointing that councillor Johnson, after being in this place for 11 years, hasn't got to the concept that every petition that is put through this chamber has to be considered. The petition that she referred to, a quarter, one, sorry, one third of the residents who signed the petition, they wanted it named after a traditional owner of this land. One third of those people actually lived in the Tennyson Ward. Madam Chair, the reason why this petition was delayed-
Point of order mister Chairman.
Point of order against you councillor Hammond, councillor Johnston?
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Note your claim councillor Hammond.
Thank you mister Chair, the reason why this petition was delayed informed that more information was required by the councillor of Tennyson. This information then was delivered to the council officers, the hardworking council officers that she likes to put down in this place. Then had to go and make sure that all the information that was received was actually accurate and historically correct. I'd like to thank councillor Johnson for her hard work on this petition and getting the information required by our hardworking council officers and naming this park after such a distinguished family. So, thank you councillor Johnson for all your history checks and getting the information through to the officers. Thank you.
Now councillor Johnston, you claimed to be misrepresented, but please, once again, can you keep your comments to-
Yes.
-the point of misrepresentation and don't relegate the argument, thank you.
Yes, in my speech about this matter, I indicated that the petitioner for the alternate names did not live in Yorongga, was not a local resident in Yorongga and neither were the five people who signed that petition to stop this park being named after Ron Goldner and Rigby Place.
Alright now, we're going to put that, we're going to put that resolution, all those in favour of the adoption of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee report say aye.
Aye.
Those against no, the ayes have it. Can I draw the council's attention to the Field Services Committee report please councillor Howard?
Thank you mister Chair, I move that the report of the Field Services Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 7th of May 2019 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Marks, the report of the Field Services Committee dated Tuesday the 7th of May 2019 be adopted. Is there any debate councillor Howard?
Chair, last week in our committee, we had a presentation providing an overview of Field Services from council's executive manager of Field Services. It was a great opportunity to welcome and introduce our new committee members by having our executive manager provide the overview of the varied and many responsibilities of the over 1,600 employees working across Field Services. Many of these responsibilities include the bread and butter work that council does to keep our city clean and green, to get residents home quicker and safer and to deliver the enviable quality of life that we are all fortunate to enjoy as residents of our new world city. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our passionate and dedicated officers within Field Services for the incredible work that they do every day to ensure that Brisbane continues to thrive as a great place to live, work and relax and I recommend it to the chamber.
Further debate councillor Johnston?
Yes, just briefly, as we, we're noting this was a new presentation for the new committee. I presume that means that councillor Howard will have to do another one next week given she's got more new members on her committee who attended this week because the Lord Mayor's had to keep chopping and changing and playing musical chairs with all the committees.
Further speakers councillor Howard?
I don't think I need to discuss that.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Thank you. Oh, I do actually, sorry. Can I just say what a shame it is that when I stand up here and thank the officers for the work that they do, when we have one of our newest committee members say it is the best presentation she has ever seen, to have those sorts of comments entered into this chamber is a disgrace. And all I can say, and all I can-
Hey hey councillors, councillors will be heard in silence councillor Howard?
I actually expected councillor Sri might get up and perhaps say how disrespectful that is. I don't hear you councillor Sri. So, mister Chair, can I once again reiterate my thanks?
Yeah, councillor, again councillors will be heard in silence please councillor Howard?
Can I once again say how very grateful I am as the Chair of this fabulous committee to thank the many, many officers out there every day that work diligently to make this city the great place that it is. Thank you.
Right, all those in favour of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Can I please draw the council's attention to the Lifestyle and Community Services Committee report councillor Matic?
Mister Chair, I move the report of the Lifestyle and Community Services Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 7th of May 2019 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Matic, seconded by councillor Richards, that the report of the Lifestyle and Community Services Committee dated Tuesday the 7th of May 2019 be adopted. Is there any debate councillor Matic?
Thank you mister Chair, before I get to the report, there is one thing I'd like to talk about and that is my t-shirt. Which many councillors have commented on tonight and I thank you for the positive comments. And, oh, inappropriate councillor Cummings, it's not inappropriate. Now, the t-shirt says bad and I've had an array of comments about it and some have wondered whether it was a Michael Jackson impersonation or not and that I would be seeing, but what it is mister Chair, is that this is the Brisbane Art Design Festival which council launched last week. So, as in the Museum of Brisbane and as the, as the programme says, bad is good. But can I say to you, when you look at this programme, bad is actually awesome. Yeah, you all need to go and experience this wonderful 17 days of over 120 different artists across our city, across numerous locations to get the feel of what the creatives in our community are providing to us. Not only established artists but emerging artists as well are putting their heart and soul into presentations in various forms, including incorporating design art in this year's festival to show us the best of what Brisbane can present. And I'm really proud to be able to be part of the committee that oversees this. I really want to acknowledge and thank Renee Grace and the team from the Museum of Brisbane for their hard work in putting this festival together and all of the different stakeholders that have, that are part and partnering with us in this programme. There is so much in this for everyone to be able to experience. There is the Indigenous Art Trail that we, that we spoke about last week. The Brisbane Street Art Festival that was, that we launched in councillor Sri's ward and then formerly at Howard Smith Wharves. We also saw as part of the programme, the, I was at, on the weekend at Fireworks Gallery down at Bowen Hills where we had both Scott Redford and Anthony Lister's work on display. And there was a presentation by Scott, who is an established artist, not only within Brisbane but nationally and internationally as well, of all of their works. And of course, Anthony Lister did a special array of works just for that presentation alone. This is the powerhouse of art and representation that we have within our city. And this is the kind of thing that we all need to embrace as a community. Importantly also, the Lord Mayor was at the launch of Botanica on Thursday, formerly opened on Friday. If you, if you get the opportunity, go down and see what we've done in that space as well. So, there is something literally for everyone in this programme. And, and as I said earlier, when we noted the change of the name of this committee to include the word the arts, it is absolutely fundamental to our community what we represent, what we stand for, not only as a council but as a society as well. To ensure that we get out there supporting local artists, supporting people within the community to express their passion, their feelings, their experiences. There are so many wonderful stories to be told in this programme. I spoke to a street artist at the launch at Howard Smith Wharves whose work incorporated not only her Japanese background on behalf of her father's family but also the breast cancer that she went through and survived as well within that artwork. These are the kind of things that so many amazingly talented people are doing within this city, sharing their stories, sharing their hearts. And we need to be able as a community to embrace that. And so, well, when you get time out of your busy schedules to take the opportunity, please go on the council's website or museums, the Museum of Brisbane's website. Have a look at the programme of works there, there will be something there for you to go to. And please get the word out to all of your residents within your wards. It is, this is such a powerhouse programme and it is something that we should all really embrace and we should all be bad together because this is what Brisbane is. This programme encaps- This programme encapsulates everything amazing and creative and inspiring that the city has to offer, and we all need to stand up and be proud of it, because it is worth shouting about. Now, Mr. Chairman, I also need to talk about the programme and the presentation that was on the week before, and that was around Youth Week. And again, again, it's about engaging and responding to our young people within our community. This programme continues to grow week on week. I was at the launch of this programme, of the live concert portion of this programme at Eat Street. Seeing these amazingly talented young people is inspiring. These are young people aged 17 to 22, 25 years of age, who are of such a high calibre in their singing and their performance, the guitar, around playing the guitar, just being in a band. Some of these young people actually have already been booked for various festivals and events across the state, that's how good they are. So, we've seen an increase in the number of participants of creatives within this programme this year, but also we've seen such a great outcome as far as people attending all of these various events. And again, I'd like to acknowledge and thank the officers for all of their hard work and passion in this programme, to make sure that we're connecting with our youth, that we're doing it in a way that is creative, that is collaborative and connected. You know, when we had our speaker earlier today around the issue of bullying, if we know each other, if we care about each other as a community, if we engage with each other, then on so many different levels, then we can ultimately make ourselves a better society. And being able to do it through a connected and creative experience is fundamental to that. It's not only about our relationships on a day-to-day level, but it's about acknowledging each other on a so much deeper level. This is the kind of programme that we are delivering. I'm really proud that we've had such a great outcome from this programme, and I look forward to working with the officers in this space to see what new and better things they can do for next year, and I commend this report to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Sri.
Thanks. Just rise really briefly to say that if councillor Howard wants me to be the Chair of the committee, I'm happy to take on that role, but also just to speak positively about the Brisbane Asia Festival, I think the work that council's done in this space is genuinely really positive, and I went along to a couple of the events this year and thought they were really, really, really great, and it was money well spent. I would suggest that the council is not funding that programme anywhere near enough, compared to some of the other projects and programmes on the council budget that get millions and millions of dollars of funding, the amount of money that goes towards the arts and these kinds of community events is woefully inadequate. So while I'm full of praise for that particular event, I think it's a bit insulting to the artists and organisers that they get so little funding. That Brisbane Asia Festival could be a really big positive event for Brisbane if we get behind it fully and put a lot more funding and support into it than we are currently.
Further speakers? Councillor Matic.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and I thank councillor Sri for his words. I note what he's saying. We are, we try and maximise the amount of money that we get within this programme. We continue year on year to provide improvements within the programme. The partnerships that we have established, not only particularly in kind, have been fundamental to this outcome. Ultimately, we can always put more money into the arts, but what we're always wanting to achieve are better outcomes with what we've got. And there are opportunities continuously to do that better, to get the word out, to ensure that everyone is heard in this space, and that as a community we grow. So, it's not just about the funding, councillor Sri, it is about how we work more collaboratively and get better outcomes for everyone, for everyone's benefit as a community.
All right, I will now put the resolution, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye!
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. I will now draw the council's attention to the Finance and Economic Development Committee. Councillor Allen.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 7th of May, 2019, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Marks, the report of the Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 7th of May, 2019, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a regular presentation from our corporate treasurer last week, and the title of the presentation, Net Borrowings, Cash Investment and Funding for March 2019, actually belies some of the very interesting content in that presentation, and, yes councillor, the report provides some really good insights into the economic environment in which we're operating. It gives an overview of the global position, the domestic position, and then covers Queensland and Brisbane. And I did want to touch briefly upon some of the elements that were outlined in that report. In the context of the global marketplace, the United States, China and European Union are all seeing a softening of their economic outlook, and particularly in the context of China and the United States, this is driven primarily by a bit of a trade war they're currently having. Now, that may not be a big issue typically, but China and the US are a couple of our biggest trading partners, so ultimately that will impact the Australian economy over time. The domestic market-
Councillors, we're heard in silence, please.
The domestic market has had a pretty good year in 2018, and some of the challenges overseas have been reflected in the first half of 2019. So domestically, we are seeing the potential of some softening in the economic outlook, and this was probably well reflected in the Reserve's decision last week to leave interest rates on hold. And as we all know, there is some softening of the housing market, particularly in southern states, which has the potential to flow through to other economies in the country. The economy in Queensland surprisingly is holding up against these headwinds. How long this will go on, I don't know, but certainly in the context of Queensland, the economy is being supported by tourism, infrastructure spending, and things such as the Second Runway in Brisbane are going to continue to support tourism in this state, which is a good thing, and obviously we would hope that will help to support the economy in Brisbane. Brisbane continues to be supported, at least in an economic sense, by the continued growth of the population, so in the face of softening economies in Sydney and Melbourne, Brisbane's doing relatively well. So, in the, I'll leave that, that's all I wanted to say about that particular report. During the committee meeting, we also tabled the Bank and Investment Report for February 2019 and March 2019, both of which revealed and showed the strong and sound financial position that this council is in. I commend the report to the chamber.
Is there any further debate? Councillor Sri.
Just really briefly, in response to the report on economic trends, a straightforward question I'm really interested in through you, Mr. Chair, councillor Allen, do you have a view that it is preferable for property prices in Brisbane to fall or to continue rising?
We can't really do it in that, sorry councillor Sri, can't really do that in that circumstance, you'd have to ask councillor Allen that question when he's speaking. All right. Any further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I don't normally speak on the Finance and Economic Development Committee report, but that was, in my, in my 11, in my 11 years, that was the most interesting one I think I've heard, and I thank councillor Allen for his insightful comments in relation to the international economy, the national economy, the state economy, and I'm not sure whether he did mention too much about Brisbane, other than, I believe the quote was, that Brisbane is holding up well in terms of its finances. And I'd just like to draw his attention to why he believes that's the case. Because I would just say to you, as in your first role as chairman, don't treat the rate payers of Brisbane as a cash cow. In every single year I have been a councillor in this place, including the year of the floods, the LNP administration has hiked up rates on Brisbane residents by five or seven per cent. In the flood year, it was one and a half per cent. It's never, ever gone down, it's never, ever stayed the same. So, when you're talking about the fact that, you know, the finances of Brisbane are holding up well, that is because the LNP is simply trying to get more and more and more money out of the rate payers of Brisbane, and I think as most people in here who, you know, are here all the time would know, I don't think you're necessarily spending it as well. So, my little bit of feedback is, welcome to this portfolio. I would just say to you that the trade war between China and the US is less relevant than how this city is going to levy rates and how it is going to spend the cash flow that it gets from the rates of this city, from fines, and how it is going to spend that money, and whether it spends it fairly and equitably around the city. But I do thank councillor Allen for the, maybe, what do we call it, Economics 101? I can see that when councillor Owen's back next week, that that's going to be a wonderful relationship. We'll get Accounting 101 from her and Economics 101 from you.
Further speakers? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to correct councillor Johnston, the point I made was that the economy in Brisbane is performing relatively better than Sydney and Melbourne, in the context of her commentary around rates. The budget will be handed down in a few weeks, and she can wait till then.
All right, I'll now put that resolution, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye!
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Can I draw the council's attention to the presentation of petitions? Are there any petitions? Councillor Sri.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I have a petition from residents around Faversham Street raising concerns about noise pollution.
Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a petition regarding renaming a park from Tom O'Neill Park to Robert Vickles Place.
Councillor Cooper.
Mr. Chair, I have a petition about a yellow line in Fitzgibbon.
Councillor Huang.
Mr. Chair, I have a petition from residents in Robertson about park upgrades.
May I please have a resolution for the progress of those petitions?
I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Griffiths, that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye!
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
What of order to you councillor Johnston?
Can I just clarify a matter of procedure? Is the new finance chairman also still the whip for the LNP?
I'm not sure, he's the person who moved the resolution.
Yeah.
All right, councillors, are there any statements required as a result of a councillor conduct review-
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, yes councillor Johnston.
Is that, is that just something that you could clarify for us, perhaps?
I, I will ask later. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of a councillor conduct review panel order? Are there any matters of general business? I draw to the attention of the room, councillor Mackay is making his maiden speech, and that maiden speeches will be heard in silence.
Chair, I rise with the honour of giving my first speech. Imagine a 14-year-old boy sitting with his paediatric oncologist in a musty clinic up on Wickham Terrace. That teenager was a cancer survivor. As a young boy, he had a kidney and half his bladder removed because of a tumour, and now he was sitting with Peter O'Regan, the doctor who had saved his life with experimental chemotherapy and personal dedication. James, said the doctor, you have been given a second chance, don't waste it. That's strong words for anyone to hear, let alone a young bloke who pondered the question, what is your purpose in life? The number one way you can impact people is to help. Help someone else. Help as often and as generously as you can. Be generous with time and with resources. I'm a bad Christian, but one parable sticks with me. The rich men give handfuls of money at the church collection, but the old lady gives her last two red cents. We know who is more generous. I've discovered the purpose of life is to lead a life of purpose. So it's 1994, two years after that appointment with the doctor. I'm a prefect at St Peter's in Indrapelli, and I'm standing in front of the school assembly. I'm in charge of getting kids to volunteer for community service. Guys, I want you to volunteer your lunch break to assist us today. I have great news, this is an activity like none you've ever done before, because today we're washing guide dogs for the blind. We had a record turnout for community service that day, but you can imagine their disappointment when they found out they weren't washing Labradors, but one-foot-high plastic collection dogs. And that was probably when my community service really began. For those who know me, you know how I operate. I work to bring locals together. I work to create engagement and consensus, to make our community stronger and to help where I can. Tonight, I have the remarkable opportunity to outline how I intend to continue that service. I am humbled to be chosen to represent the people of Walter-Taylor. I am humbled to be a councillor of what I regard as the world's greatest city. When you start this job, you become aware of the massive responsibilities that lie before you, of the massive expectations people have of you. It is my hope to fulfil these duties to the best of my abilities for years to come, even for those who do not vote for me or do not vote at all. But first, make no mistake, our country is at a crossroads. Saturday may be the last day Australia has a prime minister you can be proud of. Saturday may be the last day of life in Australia as we know it. So make no mistake-
This is a maiden speech, and will be heard in silence.
A Labor government is the biggest threat to your way of life, so I urge the people of Ryan to elect Julian Simmons to avoid such a fate. Labor is dangerous. You've seen their reckless management in Queensland, and you can imagine the impacts. These people want more government, we want less. These people want to put up your council rates and costs, and we want to keep your costs down. I fear for the future of Australia under a Labor federal government, and I fear for Brisbane under a Labor Lord Mayor. The next nine months present both an opportunity and a threat. It's an opportunity for the Lord Mayor to communicate his vision for Brisbane, so he can build the infrastructure you need and to protect your lifestyle. There's also a threat in that if Labor were to assume power in City Hall, the solid management and fiscal conservatism of the LNP Lord Mayors would be at risk. Some politicians want to be the hero of the story. I want you, the constituent, to be the hero of the story. I will work as a guide to help you achieve what you need to, a facilitator to get as much out of living in Brisbane as possible. It's not about the things you can build, it's about the communities you build. So while I could rattle off a number of infrastructure projects, I won't. I would prefer to talk about people. Being inclusive means being included. You are surrounded by a community, and at the same time you do not participate. You don't know your neighbour's name. You don't say hello to the stranger you pass in the street. You can be lonely in a sea of people. Chair, people in this place might know me from my time with the St Lucia Community Association. We pulled together hundreds of St Lucia residents to work with the association. You see, there was a risk that the University of Queensland would expand its campus through residential St Lucia, but these people joined with their community to entrench sensible development, a common cause, a shared purpose. When people feel valued and have something to believe in, they come together, they build a community. You would suppose that in a land of plenty, you would form close-knit communities, but this is not always the case. Everyone may be equal, but not everyone is the same. Maybe it's just part of the fabric of modern society, or maybe it's Twitter's fault and we're all doomed. I'm sure, like me, you'll err on the side of positivity. As the song goes, I have travelled the world. I've seen the sights and had delights in every foreign shore, and I can tell you this, Australians have it better than most. I reflect, I reflect on my trips to India and the total and utter abject poverty of the slums of Mumbai, where children have no food and their parents have no hope. Or the orphanage I volunteered at in Mexico, where children die because they're treated by witches, not by doctors. You thank your lucky stars you were born or came to the Southern Cross. We agirt by sea and call the Lucky Country Home. We're one of the world's most advanced societies with some of the best brains on the planet. So I remain dismayed that we flush our drinking water down the toilet while billions don't have enough water to drink. These are first-world problems. These are first-world challenges that we must tackle to ensure we pass on to our grandchildren a sustainable and bright future. I'm up for the challenge, and I will do what it takes to help make Brisbane the best place to live. Why is Brisbane the best place to live? Maybe it's because of its quirks, like Graham, my mentor, or the unique tang of Brisbane's tap water. Maybe it's October's purple carpets. You can't really put your finger on why we love Brisbane so much, but you know it's worth promoting. So, I will promote the achievements and the vision of the Lord Mayor and the administration, so voters know who's responsible for the good work. I will be active, enthusiastic and available, so voters and constituents can get to know, like and trust me. I will try to door knock every home in the ward, so the community knows I am committed and here to help them. Let's talk for a moment what I won't do. I will not abandon my values and carry on like a pork chop. I will not come into this place with a total lack of understanding of the Westminster system. I will not stay in this chamber so long that I become stale, bored and- bored and tired. My final point, because I believe in reward for effort, I will not indulge the concept of tenure equaling advancement because everyone on this side of the room believes in reward for effort and everyone over here knows that we need to work hard. I credit the Liberal National Party for holding City Hall this long because this is the team that has offered the vision, has held true to its values and has given hope to the people of Brisbane. And now with renewal in the ranks, we are motivated and inspired to continue the good work. Speaking of renewal, I want to pay tribute to my predecessor, Julian Simmons. Julian, I have to say that my feet feel quite small in these shoes of yours. You have made a huge impact on our local area and I trust come Sunday we'll be able to work together in an official capacity. As you may know, Walter Taylor has changed boundaries over the years, so I also acknowledge and thank former councillors Jane Prentice, Judy Magup and June O'Connell for their advice, support and encouragement over more than two decades. I'll continue the theme of thanks and offer the biggest shout out to my wonderful wife, Catherine. As a mother, you are unparalleled. You are a rock to your friends and a treasure to me. Harriet, our daughter is living with our family values of being strong, brave and kind. One day I'll be, she'll be grown up. I credit my father for my keen interest in business and for teaching me to always think three steps ahead and not just one. A huge thank you and congratulations to Derek who has stepped up and has done everything a business partner could possibly ask for. Our family comes from humble stock. The grandson of a rope salesman, I remain the only person in the family to have a uni degree. Maybe everyone else was too busy working hard. Whatever the reason, well done to all of you and thanks for your support. I could literally stand here all night and thank people, but I won't. So to all my friends, colleagues, party members, community members and teammates, consider yourself thanked. Finally, my mother. Finally, my mother who saved the life of that little boy with cancer. I am the father of a three-year-old. I cannot imagine. I cannot imagine how hard it would be to watch your child with cancer, screaming in pain and urinating chunks of tissue. The doctor's telling you. The doctor's telling you that nothing can be done and to take your child home and spend your last weeks together. Without her tenacity and persistence, I would be dead. So I will not waste my second chance. I will use my time in this place to help. I will use my time here to be generous and help make Brisbane the best it can be. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Any further matters of general business? councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak this evening about the Cannon Hill Bowls Club and about the need for this council to do more for our struggling community clubs. Mr Chair, this afternoon the chamber heard Labor councillors urgently call for this LNP administration to implement a plan to help our struggling bowls clubs specifically. As we heard, this was directly in response to the recent closure of the Maruka Bowls Club and in response to the news today of the Cannon Hill Bowls Club impending closure. I want to speak specifically about the Cannon Hill Bowls and Community Club. I was aware that this club had been struggling. Both myself and the state member for Blimber, Di Farmer, have been working with the club to keep the doors open. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the committee and volunteers who have worked tirelessly to keep the club afloat. I know that both their members, bowlers and community have appreciated their efforts. It is extremely disappointing to see the closure of another community hub, not just for the bowlers but for the broader Cannon Hill community. We know that there is a trend across Brisbane where community clubs run by volunteers are struggling. Council must do more to support them. I've raised these issues with council officers previously and also with councillor Maddock this morning in the Lifestyle and Community Services Committee. I also asked councillor Maddock to provide an undertaking today that this site will not be sold and that it will be kept as a community asset. To his credit, he did assure me that that would be the case. I also expressed my view that it would be wonderful to see bowls continuing at this site in some form. We do not want to see these sites sold nor left vacant when we have a waitlist of groups seeking space. I think we need to seriously look at these spaces being used for multiple purposes by a variety of community and sporting organisations. Mr Chair, we need to recognise that this LNP administration.
Cook, just before you start your new thought, councillors, as the time is nearing 9pm, the meeting will automatically stand adjourned unless we agree to continue the sitting. Is it the will of the council, the sitting of council proceed beyond 9pm? All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. councillor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. This administration has had over 70,000 building approvals over the last five years, making it even more crucial that there is an investment in places where the community can get together and build community. This LNP Lord Mayor, councillor Shrinna, has said today that this LNP council, and I quote, "don't determine which sports are popular", that it's not their job, that it's not sustainable and a burden on ratepayers if they were to help. Mr Chair, this is short-sighted and can I make it clear that it does not reflect the values or views of the Australian Labor Party? This side of the chamber wants to see greater investment and innovation in these community spaces and wants to see a plan for bowls and community clubs. We are going to see more clubs struggling and closures across the city. We are going to see the loss of these special parts of our communities if we don't do more. Mr Chair, these are not just bowling clubs. This is not about popular sports or propping up bowls. This is about thinking strategically and out of the box when it comes to helping these community-based organisations that are, as I've said, overwhelmingly run by volunteers and form the heart and soul of our local areas. Mr Chair, in my view, council's expectations of these organisations through their leases are what is unsustainable and they need our help. This morning in committee, there were some comments about clubs being too proud to disclose their true financial circumstances or that we find out about the issues too late. I don't think that this is a fair assessment. We must do more. We have the resources and the ability to do more and these clubs deserve better from us. Today, the Australian Labor Party gave this LNP administration the opportunity to do something about the situation in our bowls and community clubs, to urgently make a plan. Mr Chair, it was voted down. Not one member of the LNP supported the motion and in doing so, they failed to support some of their clubs in their communities who I know are also struggling. Instead, we see tonight the Chair of the Lifestyle and Community Services Committee spending his time resorting to making fun of and mocking the leader of the opposition. Mr Chair, if we don't support these clubs in our local communities, fight for them and advocate on their behalf, who will?
Further matters of general business, councillor Richards.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I stand today to speak about the upcoming 119th Brookfield Show on Friday the 17th, Saturday the 18th and Sunday the 19th of May this week. The community in the West are in the midst preparing for the biggest and best little country show in Brisbane, the Brookfield Show. So cowboys, broncos and bulls, pony rides, show jumping, clowns and face painting, wood chopping, piglet races, wine and cheese tasting, bush bands, rodeos and magic shows. We've got the jazz bands, we've got the needlework, we've got the walkabouts, camel rides, rock climbing and sideshows. We've got it all and the fireworks. I'm so proud to stand before you and highlight the longstanding community spirit of the people of the Pullan Vale Ward. I applaud the tireless work of the Brookfield Show Society, the collective work over the years and leading up to this year's show is far-reaching and most certainly enduring. I appreciate that in order to understand how we got to where we are today, we must look at the past. The wisdom contained in history is invaluable to effect sustainable societal change. The Brookfield Show Society is doing exactly that and they are doing it on grounds that have a long and proud history. It's no surprise that some of these people formed a show committee and conducted the inaugural one-day Brookfield Show on Wednesday the 20th of July in 1910. Since 1921, the Brookfield Recreation and Reserve Trust has been charged with the responsibility of the community asset, that is the Brookfield Showground, including custodianship of the heritage buildings and promoting the fair and equitable use of this common ground. With a strong and growing equestrian culture, hundreds of young children and adults have developed and refined their skills since the Brookfield Horse and Pony Club assembled itself in 1957 on the grounds. The Brookfield Horse and Pony Club continues to thrive in the midst of our new world city of Brisbane due to the unique rural residential environment in the Ward of Pullan Vale, created and sustained by the locals, community groups and Brisbane City Council. To quote directly from the people, "We have this very special place, Brookfield Showgrounds, and we greatly value it because it is central to our sense of community. We have it because it is what we want. It hasn't come about by accident or overnight. It has taken more than a century of shared vision and quiet determination to get there. We expect that will continue for many, many decades to come, and so it shall." Small groups of committed individuals from the past have grown through the generations in numbers, resources and enthusiasm and brought us right here to the present, to the 119th Brookfield Show. Mr Chair, I'd like to extend the invitation to yourself, my fellow councillors and the residents of Brisbane on behalf of the people of the Pullan Vale Ward to experience the unique spirit of community, dedication and joy that is the Brookfield Show. It's here that you can immerse yourself in fresh country air, relax and play with your families and have a unique experience of community culture. So come and embrace the wonder and magic of the Brookfield Show this Friday, Saturday and Sunday at the Brookfield Showgrounds. I'll be at the front gate and helping out as well as being at the Brisbane City Council flood hub and disaster preparedness teams displays along with our local community policing. So I hope to see you there. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further matters of general business, councillor Johnson.
Yes, I'd just like to speak briefly on the Mogal Road Coonan Street roundabout upgrade that I moved the urgency motion on earlier today. I want to start by saying, the Lord Mayor has said to me over the last couple of weeks that he wants to change the relationship that we have, that he wants to listen and work more positively with me. Today, he had the opportunity to do so. I asked the former Lord Mayor, when the budget initiative was announced almost two years ago, to make sure Tennyson Ward was included in the consultation for the Mogal Road Coonan Street intersection upgrade. Whatever happens in this location has an enormous impact on Tennyson Ward residents who have to cross the Walter Taylor Bridge and use the heavily constrained Coonan Street intersection to head into the city or further afield. The Lord Mayor, as he was then, wrote back to me with one line saying he'd passed it on to councillor Cooper and never another word's been heard on the subject from them again. So it was with some surprise a few weeks ago that I read, or I heard actually, I think it was, I think there might have been something on Twitter with councillor, no, it was on the news, I think, councillor Simmons and, I don't know, the city's minister, talking about how the intersection upgrade project was, and I quote, "shovel-ready". And I'm like, no, there's no money in the budget. All the questions I've been asking was no decisions had been made as to what's going to happen. So I put in a file request. I had to wait a month for the files and then I go in and look at all the files and it was eye-opening. Councillor Simmons has deliberately misled the people of Brisbane and more particularly the people of Walter Taylor Ward and the people of Ryan. This council has eight different options that it is considering. There is no preferred option. There is no business case. No consultation has been undertaken. There is no budget for the project. There is no costing, although some of the estimates were up to half a billion dollars and one of the documents was sort of suggesting that it may be that the project would not go forward because of the concerns. I then went on to read what councillor Simmons had been told, so literally days before he resigned, he got a briefing note on the 5th of April, a 5th of April, he got a briefing note telling him the purpose of the briefing note was to advise about the investigation works for the Mogal Road Coonan Street intersection upgrade. And he was told that for 14 weeks they would be undertaking some preliminary geotechnical testing and some other minor survey works which were going to help inform which of the options that council might actually consider. Instead, what councillor Simmons did was to go out into the public sphere and tell people that it was a shovel-ready project that work was about to commence. Now that is fundamentally untrue. Not only that, in the local paper and in the state paper, he went out and he said, "Well, we've got to fix up Coonan Street so we can fix up the Walter Taylor Bridge". So I'm like, right, finally, somebody in the Liberal Party's been listening and they're going to do something about the Walter Taylor Bridge. Maybe there's some planning in there, maybe there's some advice about what's going to happen along the corridor. Look through all the plans. Do you know what I can find? The only plans that are being considered are for the actual intersection where the roundabout is now and an upgrade of Keating Street, putting traffic lights in. So not only will residents, it take longer for them to come down Coonan Street, there's going to be another set of lights put into that corridor, put into that corridor. There's nothing, nothing south of Keating Street in any of the council plans to show that Coonan Street is being addressed as part of the design plans or the Walter Taylor Bridge is being assessed as part of the design plans. Now it gets worse. There are no bike lanes in this project. The council officers have identified this is a problem, that they are considering options without bike lanes. This project is not only that close, not that close to being done, it's so far away from finding a preferred solution that, I mean, I can't even imagine that the Lord Mayor is going to put money in this year's budget to actually fund this project because they haven't even finished the preliminary testing that they need to do. If you are looking at a major road project without putting bike lanes in, I suspect there'll be at least one resident, possibly two, of Walter Taylor Ward who might be a little bit concerned that there is no safe way for them to ride to work. But that's not all. The biggest issue that we have today is that the Lord Mayor voted down a motion that simply called for Tennyson Ward residents to be consulted as part of this process. As I outlined in the motion this morning, every man and his dog is listed on this internal and external stakeholder list to be consulted, except me, except Tennyson Ward residents. As I said, KFC is going to be consulted, but not the councillor for Tennyson whose residents have got to get across this thing. And then I've got to believe the Lord Mayor, when he votes that down, when he could have just said yes. The easy answer was to just vote yes, say, "Yep, we'll consult you". He could have stood up in that motion and said, "Yes, we'll make sure you're included". He did not do that. Instead, the LNP voted the motion down. He stood up afterwards and said, "Sure, we'll consult you", but that's what the former Lord Mayor said to me and he spent the last two years not speaking to me about it at all. I do not believe what is going on here. Councillor Cooper is in charge of this project. The former Lord Mayor said she was going to consult with me. That's not happened. I am extremely concerned about what this administration is planning to do and I hope everyone at home can see this because what is in the plans are the multi-high-rise developments that this council is looking at putting in place presumably to fund the road upgrade project that they are looking to do at Mogal Road and Coonan Street. Now, this is what is in the council files. Do the residents of Indrapilly know that this council is looking at putting thousands of units into an already congested corridor? Because I don't think they do. Do they realise that this project is not about improving road access, it's about facilitating development? Now, I don't represent the Ward of Indrapilly and I will, I don't represent the suburb of Indrapilly and I will leave how the local councillor explains this, but my concern is that this project is progressing. that this project is progressing, that Tennyson Ward residents, who are critically impacted by this project, are not being consulted, have not been consulted, and I've got maybe a wing and a prayer that I might be consulted in the future. And I can tell you that is just not good enough. If we are proposing major infrastructure projects in this city, they have to work for residents of all wards of the city, not just the LMP ones. They've got to work for people who are driving their cars, as well as cyclists, and as well as pedestrians. They can't simply look at the road aspect of a proposal and then nothing else, which is clearly what is happening here. And then, and I will call this out every single time I see it, and I'm going to publish all these documents on my website, the marketing spin in the communications plan, where councillor Simmons, former councillor Simmons, went out and said, "This is about solving the problem so we can look at the bridge". Let me tell you, it's clear in all of the council information in the files, this project does not include the bridge. He has been deliberately misleading, presumably for his own political purposes as part of this campaign. I find his behaviour to be appalling, that he would misrepresent the status of this project, that he would misrepresent how it impacts on my ward, that this Lord Mayor is prepared to vote down the fact that a local councillor has had concerns about this, and the concerns are that it needs to address the traffic issues for my ward, simply votes down a request for consultation today. So I am on to you, I am on to you, councillor Cooper and Lord Mayor. You cannot progress what you are doing here without making sure that you come clean with the residents of Brisbane, particularly those of Walter-Taylor, and the residents of Tennyson Ward, about your plans for this area. And if this kind of development is on the cards, then I think you need to front up and say what you are planning to do. Because this certainly looks like there's a little bit of road project, but there's a lot of high-rise development that is coming. And that is only going to put more pressure back on the road network, more vehicles back into an already congested corridor, and that's not going to help the-
Councillor Johnson, your time has concluded. Are there any further matters of general business? councillor Matic.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I rise to speak on Cannon Hill Bowls Club, Maruka Bowls Club, and the comments by councillor Cook previously. I thought it was important to do so, Mr. Chairman, for a number of reasons. Listening to councillor Cook speak and the motion that was raised earlier, I think, is something that can't be left unsaid. It's easy to go into the politics of this and to point fingers at each other and to cast accusations and take cheap shots, but that's not what I'm going to do. I'll leave that up to the Labor Party, Mr. Chair. For me, it's more about focus on community and what these clubs are going through. Now councillor Cook and the LP raised a motion of "do something". Don't know what that "something" is that they were talking about. They don't know what "something" looks like, Mr. Chair. Because the issue of bowls' clubs and club, community clubs around our city as a whole are complex issues. Every club is different, their needs are different. As local councillors, we all work closely with our clubs. Councillor Cook and the state member worked with Cannon Hill, and through their collective efforts and those of the committee and the community, they were not able to assist them, and the club has unfortunately reached a point where they have to withdraw from the lease. But there are clubs around our communities and in committee, this morning we spoke about this issue, of clubs within my own ward, for example, around the Red Hill Bowls Club, which was its initial incarnation, which went through all of the challenges that these other two clubs have gone through, but through the hard work and tenacity and innovation that its committee undertook, turned themselves into a community sports club.
Point of order again to councillor Matic, councillor Cook.
Will councillor Matic take a question?
Councillor Matic, will you take a question?
Yes, I will.
Councillor Matic, through you, Chair. The club that you're referring to, did they receive a $200,000 to $300,000 bill from council for repairs to their infrastructure?
Councillor Matic.
Mr. Chair, through you. Councillor Cook, I cannot honestly tell you in regards to what their previous bills were, but I can tell you this, that the club faced the same financial hardships and obligations under their lease as other clubs do, and they were able to extricate themselves from it. How did they do this? They changed the way that they do business. They turned it into a community sports club. They operated the bowls' facilities in different ways. They still play professional bowls. They run barefoot bowls on a Sunday, where it has 70 to 80 people playing regularly on a weekly basis. They introduced a cafe. They brought in a number of organisations across the city and the western suburbs on a weekly basis to rent and use the facilities. They opened up the bar to those different organisations to raise revenue. The point is this, Mr. Chair, that every club is different, every club has different people working within it with different skill bases. Now, as a council, our role is, always has been, and always will be, to work with all of our clubs. We have 600 leases across this city that offices manage, and we do the best we can with what we have. We work as closely with our clubs as they allow us sometimes, or as we can. Now, Mr. Chair, all of these issues are complex, but for councillors' office to say, "Do something", well, the answer is, "We are. We work with them every day. We always look for the opportunities to do more for them and how we can make the dollar stretch." Every single club works under a lease. The borrowings of those clubs all vary. It's not for me to justify or go into the detail of what Cannon Hill was about. My role is to try and assist that club moving forwards, and how we can work with them to retain bowls as much as they accept, but to also look for opportunities to partner. I said in committee today to councillor Cook that her role as local councillor is pivotal in this process. Working with her and offices to look for other clubs and associations to move in to assist and work with the bowls' club is fundamental, and she agreed with me. And that's the kind of cooperation that I hope I can see and achieve from her on this journey, because this bowls' club now has the next journey ahead of it, because no one wants to see bowls disappear from our city. It is a fundamental part of our culture and history, it is a Commonwealth sport, it has its own place and should be recognised and valued. And we want to do as much as we can to protect and enhance the sport of bowls. The question is, where to from here? That's not something that can be answered in some political motion. It's not something that we can simply resolve in a minute, or in an hour, or in a day. It is a journey with that club, Maruka and other such clubs, that we need to take this journey on. And we, and councillor Griffiths, his disdain and political opportunism, Mr. Chair, is just appalling, absolutely appalling. Like, if he genuinely cared about his club, could he have done more? Did he do anything? I haven't seen him speak, I haven't seen him justify, approve, or show. Or is it just another cheap shot? Again, councillor Griffiths, I don't really care what you say, all I care about is your community and the members of that bowls' club, and working with them. And you can come on that journey if you want to, or you can just be another political opportunist that you seem so well at doing. Ultimately, there are no simple answers, but we do on this side of the chamber, and always have, supported our clubs, work with our clubs, and look for options, day in, day out, Mr. Chair. And this is the conversation that we need to have with these clubs and other clubs in this situation. It's not about walking away, it's about walking with them on this journey. Thank you.
Further matters of general business? councillor Shree.
Thanks. I rise to speak on homelessness, gentrification, and city planning. Approximately 10,000 Brisbaneites are currently experiencing homelessness, and roughly 30,000 homes are sitting empty long-term. If you walk the city's streets late in the evenings, you'll see people sleeping on park benches, and bus stop shelters, and back alleys, and shop doorways. And there are also many, many more struggling out of sight, sleeping in cars, homeless shelters, precarious short-term rentals, abandoned warehouses and parking lots, and couch surfing in overcrowded homes of friends and relatives. In the last 10 years, homelessness in this city has increased at a much higher rate than general population growth. Developers and investors have been allowed to knock down cheaper housing and replace it with overpriced apartments that are often left vacant. This problem has been ignored for too long, and now our community's foundations are starting to crack. The city councillors in this room are among the most powerful people in the city. You have the power to do more to fix this, and I'm calling on all of you to get off your arses and step off. The roof's leaking, and all you're doing is placing buckets under the drips.
Perhaps, I mean, I know that understands the sentiment, but just a classier term. Could please-
Sorry, "arses" isn't classy enough. So I would say that we, as councillors, don't actually have much real control over our city, that in fact, the big developers, property speculators, and bankers shape our metropolis and make the real decisions. But if that's true, it's only because major party politicians who run our system have sold out to the corporate sector. You've handed over the keys to the city behind closed doors, and now our communities are suffering as a result. Our high rates of Aboriginal homelessness and youth homelessness are particularly shameful, as is the chronic shortage of crisis accommodation for people experiencing domestic violence and family violence. Too many people remain in abusive relationships because they can't afford to move out. It makes me wonder what good is all this so-called economic growth if wealth inequality is still rising, wages are stagnating, and more and more people are struggling to afford a home. If someone were to burn down the offices of an exploitative real estate agency, you would condemn them vociferously. Yet every day, when agents and landlords evict families into homelessness because they can't afford rising rents, you say nothing. Shelter is a fundamental human right, but leaving the provision of housing up to the private sector has failed spectacularly. Too many investors would rather rent their properties out to wealthy tourists via Airbnb or leaving them empty long-term instead of dropping the rent. Supply will never meet demand because the demand for profit is insatiable. And if private property prices ever stop rising for a few months, the developers stop building. Not only is our current housing system exploitative and unjust, it's also economically unsustainable. First home buyers are taking on unprecedented levels of private debt just to get into the market. By upzoning certain neighbourhoods without doing your homework and planning for the long-term ramifications, this council is driving up land values and making housing even less affordable while increasing the risk of a property market collapse. But it doesn't have to be this way. We can have a city where everyone who needs a home gets a home, where people in crisis don't have to languish on the public housing waiting list for months and years, where as soon as someone becomes homeless due to mental illness, or domestic violence, or a private landlord jacking up the rent, they are immediately transitioned into supported accommodation. We already have the knowledge and resources to do this. The solutions are proven and practical. The city council has the money and the land to build well-designed public housing that will take people off the street and place downward pressure on rents in the private sector. New public housing can be easily dispersed around the city rather than concentrated in one street or neighbourhood, creating diverse, mutually supportive community networks. Brisbane City Council has the money to build hundreds of new homes per year and actually house the homeless. So I'm calling on this council administration to stop mincing around and do it. We also have the power to charge higher rates and levies on investors who fail to rent out their properties. This would incentivise investors to fill their new apartments with tenants rather than leaving them empty long-term, and generate revenue which could go towards better public transport and community facilities. And perhaps most significantly, we could introduce inclusion re-zoning, so that private developers are required by law to include a proportion of public housing in each new development. Other cities around Australia are already doing this, and there's no good reason that we can't do it too. The solutions are clear, but we lack the political will. I know some of you in this place will be tempted to pass the buck, to claim falsely that housing the homelessness is the sole, homeless is the sole responsibility of state or federal governments. That's rubbish. All politicians should be working to end homelessness, regardless of what level of government you're working to. It's true that the Queensland Government's current housing strategy falls woefully short of what's needed. They're dragging their feet on the urgent need to strengthen renters' rights and are delivering new public housing at such a slow rate that they're not even making a dent in the current backlog. But there's no law or regulation preventing us here in Brisbane City Council from also doing more on this issue. In fact, as recently as a decade ago, this council played a much more active role in supporting and housing the homeless. Today, all you do is play loud music late at night in public squares to deter people from sleeping there, so that the visible evidence of your apathy and ineptitude remains out of sight and out of mind. The lack of action from all levels of government to address the housing affordability crisis is an international embarrassment and a stain on our collective conscience. We can and must do better.
Further matters of general business? I declare the meeting closed. So, all right, one more, go on, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ringing endorsement. I'd just like to, yes, I'd just like to, I'd just, at the outset, note that councillor Griffiths will be making a contribution after I speak, Mr. Chair. I'd just rise to speak about the fantastic Vesake Mela that we held in Tagam. I say "we", the community, the Punjabi Cultural Association of Queensland, on Sunday, on Mother's Day. And I want to congratulate the Punjabi Cultural Association for running that event for the first year. They stepped in when the previous organisers were no longer able to do that, so I want to thank them, particularly Parminda and Gary Singh, there are many other people as well, but those two certainly led the charge when it came to organising that festival and physically setting it up as well. A number of elected representatives were there, councillor Wyndham came along, councillor Owen took a moment out of her busy federal election schedule to come over to Tagam, councillor Cooper was there and provided funding through her, her ward, LMCF ward fund, as did I, and Brisbane City Council kicked in some money to that as well. We also, for the second year in a row, held a citizenship ceremony where we welcomed 74 new citizens as part of that. Some of those were people from India, of, who practised the Sikh faith as well, but many weren't, and that's what is now becoming a great element of that festival, a truly multicultural festival, with those 74 people coming from 18 different nationalities. And councillor Cooper assisted me onstage in presiding over that ceremony, so it was a fantastic part of that, as well as the broader, the broader festival as well. It's a great celebration of what modern Brisbane is. When you look at the census of 2006, the, particularly in the Brisbane region, but in the north Brisbane region, the people who identified of a Sikh faith was not recorded, the numbers were so low. When you go to the next census, that now, that growth has been exponential in the Sikh community, and there is some 15,000 people of Sikh faith living in Greater Brisbane now. So it's a growing and very important part of our community, a wonderful faith that is very open and welcoming, and very interested in becoming an integral part of our community. So I want to thank them for continuing to play that active role. And I gave them the commitment that I would seek festival funding for them, and I know they raised that on the day as well, and I've raised that with councillor Owen, when she's not busy, of course, in Morton, and councillor Cooper as well, as well. Unfortunately, councillor Owen couldn't give them any commitments to that, she said she'd have to wait and see what happened on Saturday, but I did give them that commitment that I would, I would raise that, I'll be writing to councillor Matic as well in raising that. They did get support from the Brisbane City Council Grants Unit, and what they're asking for is not an enormous amount of money, but it would make an enormous difference to the ongoing viability of what is becoming one of the Great North Side multicultural festivals.
Any further matters of general business? councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairperson. I'm glad you've kept the meeting going. I just want to respond in general business today to the issue of bowls' clubs across the city, and the stance by this LMP administration. And let's reinforce that this LMP administration has a majority on here in this council, and it's very big, very big. It's 19, isn't it? 19. Massive majority, massive majority. And they have a mayor, and the mayor has been around for 15, 16 years. And today, we had the opportunity for them to do something for Brisbane's bowls' clubs, and our bowls' clubs are struggling. And the LMP had the opportunity to work with the bowls' clubs and work with Bowls Queensland to come up with a plan for our bowls' clubs in four weeks. to come up with a plan for our bowls clubs in four weeks. And what did they vote? They voted not to do it. They voted not to support Brisbane clubs. They voted not to support Brisbane communities. They voted to let Brisbane down. We know that there are struggling bowls clubs all over Brisbane. All over Brisbane. And the solution that they have offered in the past is to sell sites. The LMP solution to our failing bowls clubs is to sell sites. Let them be developed for units.
Point of order, Mr Chairman. Councillor Griffiths is misleading the chamber, Mr Chairman. I ask that he withdraw that statement.
Councillor Griffiths, will you withdraw?
I'll consider it, Mr Chair, but I'll consider it.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order against you, councillor Griffiths.
Will councillor Griffiths take a question?
Will councillor Griffiths?
No, I won't take a question. I won't take a question. But it's interesting to notice how twitchy they are and the very person who has...
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order against you, councillor Griffiths.
I ask councillor Griffiths through you to withdraw this statement as he is misleading this chamber. And he hasn't responded as to whether he will or won't. He continues to mislead this chamber. Will you withdraw the statement, which is patently untrue as to what you just said?
Councillor Griffiths, will you withdraw the statement?
If the councillor believes it's incorrect, I'll withdraw the statement. But I want to point to the example of Mowbray Bowls Club at East Brisbane. And I remember this chamber, I remember this chamber and this LMP party room, this LMP majority voting for that bowls club to go to CBIC so they could be developed into two, was it 14s? 12. 12-storey high-rise apartments. I remember people on that side of the chamber voting for that. And because of the massive protest about actually the LMP selling off council-owned land, they backed down the week before Christmas. Are any of you denying that? No, you're not denying that because it's in the papers, it's in the records, it's true. That was your solution for dealing with the bowls club. And councillor Adams shakes her head. Councillor Adams has had the opportunity numerous times tonight to talk about Taragindi Bowls Club. And the way that that, the way that that piece of private land, it's private sport and recreation land, was allowed to be developed by this council. That's their solution to a bowls club. Oh, look, I've been, I've given councillor Adams numerous times to talk about that tonight because I want her residents to know what she thinks. But she's been too scared to put it on the record. So today was about actually doing something for our bowls clubs. And we have a commitment on this side of the chamber to do something with our bowls clubs. I don't believe Maruka Bowls Club should be closing. And for councillor Maddick to say, well, work with me and we'll keep it going, it's closed. It's gone. Cannon Hill's going. It's gone. I've got another community facility in my area, Nett Paul Courts, that's been waiting seven years for action from this council. Seven years. It's been vacant seven years. Is that good enough for you? You are just unbelievable. You are letting some areas of this city deteriorate. You are ignoring our community facilities. And then you have the hide to actually blame the clubs. You have the hide to blame the residents of Brisbane for the way this council...
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order against you, councillor Griffiths. Councillor Maddick.
Councillor Griffiths is again misleading the chamber in his comments. I ask that he withdraw that statement.
No, this is not misleading the chamber. This is what you said. This is on the record.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order against you, councillor Griffiths.
Since councillor Griffiths chooses not to tell the truth, I claim to be misrepresented.
It is noted.
Very good. You claim to be misrepresented. It's interesting that we have one of the weakest chairs who's responsible for one of the most important areas of our city. It's interesting that one of our weakest chairs falls into line with not doing anything for the city. Oh, here, here we go again.
No, this is just a personal attack from those opposition who turn around and say to be kind in this place, I have not, and respectful. I have not heard anything respectful about his speech, only personal attacks. And I find it, in my opinion, myself, I find it very offensive.
I, I find...
Councillor Griffiths, as we said earlier, courtesy is paramount in this place, so please just...
And I agree, and I think someone mocking our leader before was appalling. And he wasn't pulled up by himself, Mr Chair. So I, I find that amazing.
Point of order against you, councillor Griffiths.
Councillor Griffiths is again misleading the chamber. You did pull me up. I ask that he withdraw that statement.
Will you withdraw? At the time councillor Maddick was stopped, and he ceased and apologised.
Yeah, but you didn't pull him up. My point was, you actually didn't intervene to pull him up.
As I said, as I said councillor Griffiths, courtesy is paramount in this place. Please, please keep your remarks proportionate and appropriate.
Yes, okay. And what I, what I think is sad about this administration and sad about those supposed chairpersons over there is their lack of commitment to our city and their lack of commitment to our sporting facilities and their lack of commitment to the residents of Brisbane. And they seem to be so caught up in their own hubris and their own games that they've forgotten that they're actually representing the people of Brisbane. On this side of the chamber, we'll fight to represent those organisations. I'll fight to stop EU development at Maruka Bowls Club. I will fight to stop the LMP doing anything that's not, that's inappropriate with bowls clubs in my area. And I'm happy to take that fight up to you. And frankly, residents of Brisbane want to see some people take the fight up to you because you aren't interested in what they want, you aren't interested in delivering for them, and I think you're on the nose at the moment. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further matters of general business? They're being done. Declare the... Oh, councillor Maddick, your, your misrepresentation.
Thank you, Mr Chair. The councillor Griffiths, in his performance, said that I was blaming the clubs. At no point did I blame any club for what has happened to it. What I said was that every club's circumstances are different and that we need to work with them individually to address their concerns.
Thank you. Declare the meeting closed.